Tim will not be here this morning. He's was on an ambulance run up to Jackson.
Who's that going to be?
Tim's not going to be here this morning. Um, he got tied up in Jackson, so.
Okay.
But we've got, we've got quorum, so we're good to go.
Okay, I have, I have to leave at 10:15. We gotta be on the road and I, I don't want to be on the cell phone on the road, so.
Okay, we'll make it happen. We'll get started. Um, if you'd please join me in prayer and pledge. Dear, dear Lord, help us all to be more understanding and forgiving. Treat thy neighbor as we would want to be treated ourselves. Help us all to live life to the fullest, but also with your will in mind. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First call out to the public. Anyone wish to address the board at this time? Good morning, Renee.
Morning. From the Veteran Affairs, each of the board members received an envelope. Tom Orzecka is moving, so he is stepping down as chairman as of October meeting. And we are also working on another grant for the $10,000, for them to release that. So we're taking the steps for that, for the office. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Renee. And yes, the board met yesterday and they did accept Tom's resignation reluctantly, so.
So we're gonna be looking for a new person, I mean, to replace, like, not replace him as chairman, but.
Well, the vice chair will take over as chairman. We'll elect a new vice chair. And then, since we had originally talked about having two alternates and we ended up with three, we're gonna move one alternate up into a regular position, so, yeah, so we're good to go.
Who's the vice chair?
Larry Rathbun.
Oh, okay.
Had to think for that, thank you.
Okay, so Larry Rathbun will be chair.
Correct.
Okay.
Going forward, yeah. Anyone else at this time? We will have another public comment at the end of the meeting. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. Would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved, supported.
Moved and supported. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Little delay there, the west coast delay, huh? Okay. Hope the weather's good out there, Bruce.
It is.
It's early, it's early in the morning.
Yeah. Correspondence is listed. Any comments on correspondence? I will make a comment at this time on item 13 there, the OMI Council of Government Meeting Agenda. Marty, I talked to Robin about that. That will also constitute as the posting for the meeting, so. Because the date's on it, the time, the place, everything's on there, so we'll make a copy of that and post that, please. That entity has become an entity.
This is referring to the HACRA part?
Yes. The OMI Council of Government, it's the Ohio, Michigan, Indiana Council of Government. Four have signed. There's two more expected to sign at the August 29th meeting. And we're working on the other ones. I mean, it's, it's a process. But we're gonna elect officers on the 29th and we're gonna start looking at our priorities and funding mechanisms, so. So that's kind of a quick update on that. Yes, Ruth?
This letter that came that has all these signatures on it about Ash Gwata Beach, what did Chair Parker say about this? Can you tell? Chair Parker?
We can ask him.
The letter Julie presented to me this morning, I have not had one resident stop by my office, nor has that letter been presented. What I called to question right away was when they announced the 20 mile an hour speed limit, most of those are, residential's are 25. And I was gonna cross-reference with the road commission to see if there's something special in that. But their problem there is one of many throughout the county where limited in amount of patrols. We just don't actively patrol down Ash Gwata Drive a lot of times. We try to pull through there, but that's the first I've heard about it, is when the commissioner of the agency that we today.
So, so you're gonna check with the road commission whether it should be 20 or 25?
Yeah.
Somebody get back to these. Julie will?
Yeah, Julie will get back to her. I see she just handed Bob a copy of it, so I'm sure Bob can follow up with Julie and the sheriff.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on correspondence? Guess it entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any... Well, the ORV discussion, I told Tim, since he's not here, we'll move that to the next meeting. So that will be stricken from this one and move to the to the last meeting of this month, and we'll more than likely have to take action at that time as well, if, if that's the decision of the board. So we'll do it all at once, discussion and action. Other than that, is there any other changes to the, excuse me, the regular agenda? All those in favor with that one change, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. That brings us up to standing order. Mr. Sanford, it looks like you're first.
Either way, everybody, good morning. Pretty plain on the agenda why I'm here, to request permission again to replace a part-time employee with the collective action that this board took last year. We have really not had a problem with people leaving for other employment too much. Still happens occasionally. But while other places do pay more for dispatchers now, it's not worth losing your seniority and driving there, so that is no longer a serious issue. But I would like, we do have three in training at the moment, and that's about all we can train, one on each shift, and I would like permission to replace a part-time person. We will work on applications if you approve it. And we're doing that in the next few months. It won't happen right away because we have to get the training that we need to do caught up first. That's why I'm here.
Okay, so can I just make a motion for a second?
You may.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Doug Sanford to hire a part-time replacement person.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion?
Okay, just to clarify, this is just a replacement. It's nobody, nothing new. It's somebody that left that you're replacing. So there's no change in the budget or anything like that?
No change in the budget. Actually, we're saving money if you want to look at it that way. Everybody's working overtime, so I'm not sure if that balances out.
Right.
But we're not paying that person now, so that money's still in front of them.
Okay, thank you.
I have a constituent saying the broadcast is not out.
I'll text you.
Thank you.
Okay. Technical difficulties. Sorry about that. In this world of tech.
Isn't it amazing?
Okay. So with that said, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You may hire a replacement.
We will proceed and thank you for your support. We are very pleased. I slept a whole lot better Tuesday night with our surcharge renewal passing. I'm still disappointed in the voter turnout, but I think that's always the case for these small elections, so.
IG elections.
Yes.
Our, our small turnout.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Doug. I see Randy's on his, well, there he is, hiding behind the podium.
I can't see people. I can't see people. I know I'm on the first row. There he is.
Good morning. Good morning. I too have a position I need filled. It's a full-time position on my night shift. And I already have the budget and everything for this person. It's just a replacement in that position. It's nothing new. So I'm requesting permission to hire a full-time person.
I move to allow Randy to replace a full-time person on his maintenance staff.
Well, it's on the janitorial, I believe, right?
I'm sorry?
Janitorial, correct?
Yes, yes, my secretary, yes.
Yes.
Court.
Did I hear support? Thank you, Ruth. Discussion?
So this is a custodian?
Yes.
Does somebody leave?
Yes.
Who, who left? Can you tell us?
I, they were helped to go, so.
Can you tell who, or you're not?
I would prefer not to mention it openly.
Okay.
Any further discussion? To replace a budgeted person is basically what the motion is.
Custodian.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Fill the spot. I know Deb will be happy.
Sure myself.
She saw me the other day.
Yes, me too.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along. Bob, I believe that brings us up to you.
All right, well, thank you.
Good morning.
I'm coming here to try to explain the budget. We had an issue with the air conditioners and we didn't have the money, and I talked to Mark a little bit about that. I dropped off a few of these packets on the back page. Let's start there. That's the community center rentals from 2003 to 2018. If you scan across, you'll see it's very uneven. You never know what the rentals are gonna be. We, back in 2010, of course, the economy in 2008 took a dive, so in 2009, we were down to 9,300 a rental. Then 2010 was 8,000, 2011, 2013, 8,500, and now it's built itself back up to where one of our better years was 2018, 14,895. So with that being said, then we moved down to the county appropriations. If you, if you go to 2003, it was 35,000, and it was 35,000 previous to that. Back, with that county board back then, Mr. Lattenhauser had come to us as board and said the county board had decided we don't need a fund balance as a park commission. So you can see that in 2003, we had a fund balance of 33,984. And then as you go across, then appropriations dropped, so did the fund balances. And out of that, what we give up is, we used to spray the ponds every year. That was four, five, sometimes six thousand, depending on how many ponds you did every year. We had to give that up. And the ponds, you can tell that we did give that up too, but.
What, excuse me, Bob, what, what did you spray them for?
Weeds.
Okay.
To control weeds and so on.
Okay, thank you.
And then we used to stock, like every three years or so, do some stocking, but we had to give that up too. The state did stock some fish here four or five years ago for us at no charge. They did do that, so. But anyway, we had to give those up, and as you can see, our fund balance has dropped considerable. Now in the 2018, if you look at that fund balance, that is partially from that insurance money that ended up being at the end of the year.
It's not really.
That's not a fund balance.
It's not really a fund balance.
And so.
Is it around $5,000 still?
About 5,500, but we still have had everything replaced, yeah. And that'll, that'll show up in that budget that we presented there, so that's, that's not showed up. And then at, like the community center, we rent that out for $400, unless you do a wedding package, which is $500. And that includes Friday, Sat, early Friday end, so you can set up and stuff, and then Saturday is the wedding package. And it also includes the gazebo and so on. They always want to take pictures and stuff like that, but anyway. And we are on the upper end of rentals around Tillsdale.
Okay, I have a question about that. When Ted was there, didn't you guys raise the rentals? Didn't you guys raise the rental?
Yes.
When was that? What year? I remember it was when Ted was there.
It had to be five, six years.
Yeah, we raised it twice since Ted.
Yeah, we've raised it since then too.
Okay.
We review it every December.
Yeah, every December we decide whether we wanna up the.
But you raised it when Ted was there, and then you raised it twice since?
Yeah. And then, and we always check around to the other community center. We want, we don't want to pressure ourselves out of the business, but we are on the upper end. But I think we got more to give too, as far as parks, gazebo, waterfalls, and all that, so I think we can. And so far, the rentals are holding really steady for this year too. We're at 11,000 now? And we appropriated 14,000, so hopefully we'll still be, we still got three months left, so hopefully we can do that. And then, in a couple of years, you'll see, like in 2016, and actually in 2016, I, that, we've done it before, but we give up our per diem at the end of the year, three to four months, to balance the budget. It's that type. But when, anyway, we was told in 2004 to spend that fund balance down as quick as possible. Our theory was, we did, we wanted a fund balance so that if we had a roof go, we can replace, and we had the money to do that at the time. We could do the roof. We could do air conditioners, but as of right now, we don't have that.
Who told you to spend the balance down?
The county board at that time.
Rox and Heiser?
Yes. And, no, I'm not saying it was him.
Right, right.
But as a, in general, the board told us to spend it down as quick as possible. I don't like to spend money because you got money to spend, and, but.
Do you always do everything that you're told?
If the wife says so, yes. The, as you can see, it slowly went down, but the next year, I know for two years, we did keep spraying the ponds. But then comes the point where we're couldn't do anymore, so we have to get away from that. So now, we come to the, there's a budget in there for this year too. And Marilyn and Darlene come up, and they can go through the line items if you want on the budget. But we don't have anything to put away for a fund balance. That's the problem. We're kind of so close. And we got, out at the park, we've got one worker, but we're limiting him to 20 hours, 20 to 25. It should be 40.
That's Benny?
Benny.
Why you can't, why can't Benny do 40?
We don't have the money.
Money to pay him.
We don't have the money. He could do 40 hours every week, all year long.
Right, right.
We need him to.
And we still couldn't keep up. I mean, it's just, then Bill, we, we used to have, of course, an administrator for the park. Well, Bill's been kind of overseeing it, so that cut a lot of money to where we kind of put it towards Benny's wages. But we have two separate wages too. If Benny works outside, that's separate. And then inside for the community center, we have allotted so much to clean after the community center's done, so that, that we can keep separate.
So he only is getting, working 20 hours a week?
20 to 25. We try, if we go much over that, we're gonna end up, at the end of the year, he's not gonna have any hours. He can work and in no way pay any.
Now, what, what's the difference between the summer and the winter? Obviously, in summer, he would work a lot more, in the winter, not as much, so what's?
Yeah, in the winter, there's not a lot to do outside, other than shovel sidewalks and things like that. And then in the wintertime, of course, the community center cleans out, you'll still have that park, but there's not a lot you can do outside.
Right, right.
But in the summer months, there's plenty to do out there. So if you want, we could go through that budget if you want to. Come on.
Think if you want to just hit the highlights, Bob, you know, we don't need line by line.
I like the community center rental there. That's.
Mark?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
This is pretty simple. After the air conditioner was fixed, the bill was sent to the road commission. Should not have been sent to the road commission. And they've never paid for anything like repairs like that. That bill, I told them to send it back to me. They did. That's it. It's taken care of. They don't have to pay for anything in terms of maintenance or that kind of thing. We've done the same thing with the house, so.
Okay.
That issue taken care of.
This is true. Yeah, I just, when we went around about this air conditioner issue, what, a few weeks back, Bob and I talked about coming in and talking about this, or, you know, just enlightening us as to the budget for the park. So, yeah, I don't, I think the air conditioner's behind us. So.
Yeah, that's what I was, oh, that, I did miss something about when they took the appropriation away. Now, Mr. Lattenhauser come to us, and the question we had was, what if, what if a roof goes? Or what if a furnace goes? And he said, those are county buildings. We will take care of it. So, but that's back then, so that's, that's where we're limited. We just, we just don't have the money for the major repairs.
So two things happened. They reduced the park's budget all those years back from 35 to 25, which is where we still are today. It's not enough money, and they told them to not, you know, no fund balance. Basically, they have a minimum, you know, struggle to keep up $5,000 in there just so you have something. So, you know, it just depends on what, how, you know, how we want to take care of the parks and, and look forward. This is, you know, we've asked them to get some quotes for repairs that need to be done. The house roof has needed to be redone for quite some time. This is a quote for $6,500, basically.
From who?
From Raymond.
Right, that's rough. It needs frost on, on the house.
And all the Dallas boats and eavesdropping.
Brandon has been awesome out at the park. They've done a couple of small picklings for us at no charge. They come out and they don't, and, so, I mean, of course, we could get other quotes too, as far as that goes, but, which we would, but I just wanted to say that they've done a lot for us after. They know we're in crisis and we're good. So, but as far as, as far as the fund, fund balance, when they took the $10,000 away, they didn't have to tell us to spend it down quick because they had rented quick, so. Yeah, it wasn't. So that's where we're at. We just don't have the money to do the major repairs.
Well, I have a couple of things to say about this. First of all, I want to thank you, Bob, for coming up here today.
Oh, no problem.
With all this information, and Marilyn, both of you for coming up here today. Thank you very much. I, I think that you guys worked really hard and you put a lot into the parks, and I appreciate that very much. I don't take that lightly. Parks are important to people around here, so that's you do a very good job. I appreciate that. I, I think a couple of things. Where are you guys at with Harmony and getting the grant? Because for several years, Bruce kept saying that every year on April 1st, there's money from the state, and you guys never went for it. But now you said you were getting going and going for that.
Yes, we applied.
Right, but it's just for just.
Of course, you did.
And they've applied for a lot of grants in the past.
Every year for the 1st of April, the first person that I knew of that tried to apply for grants was, was Ted tried to apply for grants. I think that you guys need to, need to apply for grants. And I also think that you, that you need to look at other park boards that are similar to ours in the state, and what are they doing? What is their funding? Or where is their money coming from? What is their county appropriation compared to ours?
You wouldn't want to see that.
That's what we, that's what we need to see.
For example, isn't it the Somerset Township? Somerset Township, in our county alone, their park budget for their park is almost as much as our entire company by average.
It's 50 some thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So they don't have any sort of anything.
Right, it's amazing what they're doing with the minimal dollars that they have. Really, and everyone, Darlene, Marilyn, the parks board, Bob, they're to be commended for what they're doing with very, very little money.
There's gonna be some major repairs coming up, and I think the community center's getting older. The community center itself, we had it repainted and stuff, so that's nice on the inside, but it's gonna need a roof down the road. Not this year, or next year, but maybe three years or so. And that's a big building, so. And then the house roof. Now, she's never requested anything as far as the inside, and it hasn't been updated since she's lived there, so. I figure if we got no complaints, then let's not rock the boat, but the outside roof we do eventually got to get that fixed so we don't have other problems.
But there is a smaller here on the inside.
Yes, I'm a roll, yes.
From a problem that was covered by insurance, but, but it's not.
We still got to do the drywall.
The drywall hasn't been replaced and stuff. It's, there is a repair for sure.
Well, I think there's two things that, when we've got our entire board sitting here, we need to at least find out. And I think there's a question of legality here, whether you can or cannot have a fund balance.
I don't think, I think you can have a fund balance, but I, I think it's ridiculous not to have a fund balance.
Well, I think we need to verify that, Bob, because then if we can get a fund balance built up, then you guys can do the roofs, and that's, you know, just like you were saying. Or the other thing is, is we've got to make the commitment.
To do the buildings.
To be responsible for the buildings through our capital improvement fund, or our capital maintenance fund, or whatever, you know. So we'll have to take this up, like I say, when everybody's sitting here, so we can have a better discussion on it, but for now, we've got things.
Sure.
And, you know, the AC's running and working, and, but it sounds like we're gonna need to address that roof.
Yes, that's gonna be.
The house roof or the community center?
The house roof is the immediate need.
Right, right, right. And then that community center is three or four years down the road?
I'd say three or four years.
Okay.
It, it still looks pretty decent.
Does that house roof need to be done before winter sets in?
It would probably make it to spring. Just depends, you know, how much snow and ice buildup you get and so on.
Yeah. You and I both know that, you know, if we wait too long, then we've got.
Then we have a disease.
Then we have interior problems.
Right, yeah. Or we end up replacing a bunch of roofboards or both.
Yes.
Yeah, so. So Julie, let's, let's take up that discussion at the next meeting when we've got everybody here, not only the roof, but, you know, both.
Mark?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
What are we charging for rent out here a month?
525. 525.
525, Bruce.
I think if you look at what rents are throughout the county, that's quite low.
But you'd have to look at the house.
Yeah.
Look, we have, if, if we're gonna have a house, and we're going to have somebody in there, we're, then we're a landlord, not, not unlike any other landlord, and he'll build, build, and build. And we have to make enough money off the rent to pay for all the incels, and also put money away to pay for things that need to be fixed on that house. And the rent needs to be high enough to take care of that. And if it's not, then we need to ask the question, why are we renting the house? If we're losing money on it, that doesn't make any sense for the taxpayers. And that's who we're representing. So that needs to be examined and looked at closely. Needs to be a cost analysis done. And if we're way below market rent compared to other places, then we've got a choice, either raise the rent or quit renting it, and then the.
Is there, does that include utilities out at the house?
No, no, she pays all the utilities.
Okay.
But the house is not.
I mean, no, no landlord's gonna buy a house and rent it at whatever and lose money on it every year. They can't stand business that way. Neither can we.
If we was to charge more for that house, we'd have to put a lot of money in that house, a lot of money.
I can't hear what you're saying.
He said to move the rent up, he'd have to put a lot of money into that house to upgrade it.
Well, then, then maybe the thing that needs to be looked at is the end it. If we're losing money on it, and it's in bad enough shape that you can't rent it for any more than that, then. then maybe we need to talk about ending even having it.
And that's a possibility to do that. It just, it takes out, what, six, seven, seven thousand dollar budget? We haven't spent much on that house in the last fifteen years to speak of. We did a little drain problem there, um, like that. But she's never asked for a lot either, so.
If you have, if you have things at the park that are coming up that you, that need to be fixed or replaced, then you should make a list that you should give to the commissioners of everything that needs to be done and prioritize that list and tell us how much it's going to be. And then you guys need to make a plan of how you're going to pay for all that. I mean, we all need to be on the same page and understand so that when something happens, you don't come up and say, well, you know, we need this right now. And you know, we, we all are trying to get on the same page with you, which is why Mark asked you up here and I appreciate you, you being here. You see what I'm saying?
We can do that. Um, the plan that you're talking about, we can come up with a plan on what roofs we need and all the repairs we need. Our plan is we don't have the money.
Right, right, right. But we still need to know what needs to be done.
Right.
And prioritize it and, and, and how much it's going to cost. You ladies understand what I'm saying? So that we get on the same page and we don't have surprises. We're looking forward.
Well, no different than what we've tried looking at with, you know, the other county buildings as far as creating a, a plan, if you will, of when we need to replace what.
Yeah, because we can give you an idea on the roof on the community center when that's going to need to be replaced.
Right, right, right.
And eventually, probably down the road, we're going to need a well. That well, we've doctored it up, I don't know how many times, but it's, it's getting pretty bad.
Is that a four inch or five inch?
That's a four inch.
Four inch.
Uh, the problem is actually getting water. Uh, it's, there's just not, believe it or not, all in Pine, there's not enough water out there. So, that, a lot of those guys, I've looked at it, checked it and everything. We doctored it up to work just by for what we're using at the community center, so that'll work. But other than that, that's all I got.
To, to Bruce's point though, do you think that, uh, when we meet in two weeks and discuss this further, could you have perhaps a cost analysis as far as rental, you know, comparison for rental properties that Julie could bring? Do you think that?
We could try that. Um, it's a very small house.
Yeah. I think that's only a two bedroom, isn't it?
Yeah, very small.
Yeah.
The whole house is small.
Total square footage?
Oh, that I don't know.
Okay.
It's a tiny house.
Yeah. Well, that, you know, those are the things that you'd have to know to, you know, do the, uh, cost comparison is square footage, number of bedrooms, that sort of thing, but you know.
There's two, there's two small bedrooms and one bath, of course, and, uh, a very small living room and a kitchen. That's all it's in there.
Yeah, I, I'd be surprised if it's over a thousand square feet.
Yeah, that is close to fit in this room.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, yeah, if you could do that and get that to Julie, then we can talk about this some more.
All right.
So.
I, I think that if you, I think that if you, if you, if you wrote a grant and you tried to go for a grant and you didn't get it, but you came up here and you showed us that, you know, we try, we've been trying and we tried to get a grant, but we didn't get it, that, that would carry a lot more weight with us.
We've got quite a few that we went for and didn't get.
We went for the CLO. We also went for the security cameras, uh, through the insurance company and, uh, through the community foundation when we were denied.
Did you find out why?
No, they just had to let us know that there were other projects that were more fulfilling and that like the residents took advantage of.
Okay. Okay. And who worked with Ryan?
I did.
Okay. Well, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know you're trying.
Yes, we really don't have the money to hire a grant right now.
Right, I know. I know.
And just so you know, Ruth, in order to fly for those DNR grants, you have to have a five-year plan. It has to contain all these things. I mean, it's not like it's something that can be done in an hour and presented. It, it's going to take time and money to do that also.
I understand that.
Just to get all the documentation they require to even be able to apply for one of their grants.
But I think that it's totally possible because I think that Bruce told, told us this years ago. When Bruce was a senator, he told us this because I remember. And he said, you have all winter, winter time when there's not a lot going on in the park, is when you are getting ready for, to do it for April first, and this can be done. So I just appreciate you guys, you know, trying to do that.
In fact, we're working on a five-year plan now.
Yeah.
And it's, it's complicated. There's a lot in there.
Very complicated. There's a lot of requires.
Just weight it up and, and, uh, it, it takes a lot.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bruce, any closing comments? I don't know if he's still, you still there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Do you have any comments for Bob before we let him take off?
Nope.
Okay.
Coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
So we're going to discuss this again in two weeks?
Yes. We'll put it on when we've got everybody here and we'll talk about it and we'll talk about the roof and, and, uh.
Try to bring you some other information.
Julie, being in the real estate business, she should be able to help Bob get some of those comparatives on rental. But if it, I mean, if it's two bedroom and a thousand square feet or less.
Yeah, it's not very big. It's a tiny place. And like he said, I mean, they've put very minimal money into that house over the last fifteen years, so.
Well, the small two bedroom we had bought when our daughter was in Adrian to college and then we rented it afterwards. We were at the top side of the market at, what, six hundred? And then we had to move down to five fifty just because of the size of the house. You know, so.
I think based on the size and the condition of the property, that there, that's, that's about how you can charge.
Okay, well, we'll let you follow up on that, Julie. We'll work on that some more next meeting. But I think we've got to make a choice of either fund balance so that they can do those repairs or we just take the responsibility as with the other county buildings. But we'll talk about that some more. So, moving right along, committee reports. Tim will take that up at the next meeting as I indicated. So Julie, you're up.
Um, first thing I wanted to do is, you know, I, I've been to, um, Moscow Township, Cityo and Fayet here in the last couple of weeks and, um, I had a lot of feedback once again on the election similar to when we had the sheriff's millage in May that, you know, it's a lot of work. It's an all-day thing. In Fayet, I know for sure they only had twenty-seven actual voters uh, come through the door last week. And in Moscow, they had twenty. Now, they had absentee ballots, okay, so that wasn't all the votes. But they were open all day to have twenty-seven and twenty voters. And so basically what they're asking us is, when you have, to plan better. They're asking people to plan better. When you have these villages like this, to have them on regular election years at regular election times so that they don't have to have these special elections where twenty people show up. And this was pretty much evident throughout the county. I think, wasn't there only like twenty-four hundred people total that voted?
Seven, what, two-hundred percent?
Yeah. I mean, it was really ridiculous. And truthfully, if you are asking for something, whether it's a surcharge or a millage or whatever, and you really want to get a representative vote of the people, you have to have it like during a regular, normal election. Sometimes you can do it in August, like next year in August, the primary, a lot of times because of the makeup of our county and who runs for office, you know, will determine who the person probably is. So that might be appropriate next year in August. But if you want it to be representative, you have to have it during an election when the most people show up to vote. And again, I'm just make, stating the fact, being out there and asking this question, they're very unhappy about having to run these special elections where twenty, twenty people show up. It's just, it's very taxing. It's hard to get people to work. I mean, it's just. And also, I will say, I don't know what to do about this. But I saw on social media, a lot of people saying they didn't even know there was anything to vote on. Like people just didn't know. So somehow also, we're going to have to do a better job if we do have one of these to get, you know, people generally know in November there's an election. You know, they know that. But these special ones that we do, they just, there's people all over social media after it happened, you know, saying, why didn't we even know we were supposed to vote on this thing today?
Well, I have, I have a comment, I have a comment to make about that. I think that citizens have to take a responsibility on themselves.
I don't disagree with that.
And maybe if they got off of social media and started coming to meetings and started talking to their representatives, we are all out at all of our meetings every single night of the week. And we're all announcing these things repeatedly and putting it out there. Now, if they don't know, then to me, that's their responsibility because everybody knew about it. And I, I think citizens have to take a responsibility. I have, I have constituents call me and say, you know, when's the next election? When are we voting? What are we voting for? People came back, people were gone all winter long and they came back in May and there was two villages. The city public safety village and the sheriff's village. And a lot of people said, what, what happened all winter while we were gone? We didn't even know this was coming, this was, we were doing this. And now we're coming home and all of a sudden there's these two big villages. And they, I had tons of calls and tons of people talking to me about that. So to me, people that want to be informed are going to be informed. Now, I have, also have a lot of people who live in my district that do not want to be bothered. They don't want me calling them. They don't want me coming to their house. They don't want me to do anything with them. If they have a question or a problem, they'll contact me. So it, it's, it's the person's, um, right and, and what they want. But if they want to be informed, there's plenty of ways to be informed. And, and I just, I take issue with that. You have to take responsibility. We go to these meetings, I go to the Hillsdale Township meetings every single month my whole life. And there's usually one person there from the public or two people there from the public. And then people say, well, gee, I didn't know anything that was going on.
That's a good problem.
Well, where is everybody? We're all there. So, and it's a nice night and we're there, so, no. But I just think that if you, if you want to be informed, there's plenty of ways to be informed. Thank you.
Moving on a couple of things, um, the road commission is working on the Lake Pleasant Road Bridge now at Lake Bel Air. So that is closed down. So you have to either enter the south side of Lake Bel Air, you know, from Lake Pleasant Road, but you can't go through to the north side. You have to take a detour. And if you want to be on the north side of that, you're going to have to come from up around North Adams Road. You come down because you can't get through. They're going to be working on that bridge till probably November to get it done. Early November. So just so people are aware of that. Also, um, the Economic Development Partnership, um, is having their annual, um, celebration event, um, Wednesday, September eighteenth. Um, it's at the Alx Lodge right here down the street from five-thirty to seven PM. And, um, they're doing a wine and hors d'oeuvres thing this year rather than a sit-down dinner. Um, and they'll present many, uh, you know, business and industry awards. And that's twenty-five dollars a person and you are a VP to them if you'd like to attend that. Um, the Wind Project is moving forward in Moscow Township and several other townships, um, throughout the county. I'm trying to think if there's anything else I wanted to say. And we're, and Bruce and I are continuing to work on the ambulance contract. And I think you guys all got a notice from RV on that. And I think that's all I got today.
Okay, any questions for Julie? Bruce, you got anything to report? You're up next.
Yeah, Derek.
Uh, yes, he is.
Tell him to come up. We got the bids back on the, uh, actuarial study of our pension plan. Uh, there were three outfits that bid. One was from in-state. The other two were, I believe, both from out-of-state. They have offices in-state, but they're out-of-state company. The bids range from seven thousand to eighteen thousand plus. And the seven thousand dollar bid was the one that came from Walker Ross, which was a company that works with Lifeways. Uh, does a nice job with them. And so, I guess, what's your pleasure in terms of these bids? Do you want to reject them all? Do you want to accept a little bid? Where do you want to go? You can ask various questions.
Where's the money, where, where are we, how are we going to pay for this? Where's the money going to come from for this?
Yeah, it's obviously not budgeted.
Right. Ruth's question was, Bruce, where's the money coming from to pay for this actuarial study? And Derek commented it's not budgeted for, so.
It's not budgeted. We would have to come up with it out of one of the line items. I would suggest probably the line item would be, uh, uh, either the miscellaneous line item or the line item for the commissioners, uh, where we have money that we're not spending now on my lease because we're using the county car.
How much is in the miscellaneous account, Derek, right now?
Well, you mean the contingency.
Twenty thousand in there at the beginning of the year and I think there's, I think there's about seventeen left in there.
Contingency?
Correct.
About seventeen?
Yeah.
Did you hear that? Derek indicates there's about seventeen in that contingency fund.
Okay.
So.
So now, I want to ask the question. Is it my understanding that MERS already gave us like their own actuarial study?
They, they require to give an actuary every year.
Okay.
We usually give it about six months at the end of the, after the fiscal year. So we got, it was about June twenty-eighth or so when we got the one for twenty-eighteen. I believe we sent that to all the board members.
I think you did. Send it out again if you would, please.
Right, sorry. Um, so like.
The actuarial that MERS sent us in June, I asked Derek to send that back out to everyone so that they could look that over.
Okay. And, and that study, just so you all know, will not give you the information. This other study will. MERS does not do what we will be asking one of these companies to do if we decide to do it. MERS doesn't do that.
So that's my other question. So if we do decide to do this, what's our goal? Like what are we, we're just trying to.
The goal is to know what. First of all, how long and how long are we? Second of all, what are our options that are available? And, and if we were to move this to the county, what are our options that are available? Uh, and you can see on the bids that were sent out to you, one of the options is just to move it over. Uh, the second option we wanted to price on was move it over, leave the people alone that are already in the system, all new people coming in, we go to a 401K. A third option, and what would that, what would that cost us down the road for the next X number of years? The third option is to move it over to county's control, freeze everything, whether you're in the system or not in the system, and move everyone to a 401K. So it's providing information so that we can make a halfway intelligent decision as to what we want to do to pay for this pension. Because it's going to have to be paid for.
Bruce, Derek just handed out these great big packets to all of us. The, the three packets from these three bids and quotes and stuff. I don't think that we're prepared to vote on this today because none of, none of us have had a chance to read it yet. So we have, you know, we'll have to have a chance to read it and talk about it a little bit.
Ultimately, look, ultimately, it's our decision as commissioners to keep, to continue to keep kicking this down the road and pretend like there's not a problem or ultimately we're going to have to bite the bullet and decide what we want to do. The purpose of this study is to simply tell us if we decide we want to do something. The purpose of this study is to simply tell us if we decide we wanna do something, these are the financial implications of doing it. There's a lot of other things that go into this besides just financial things. But at least we would have the knowledge to know if we do X, it's gonna cost Z. If we do Y, it's gonna cost A. At least we have that knowledge. We don't have that now, and MERS can't get it to us. Won't get it to us because they don't do that kind of thing.
Okay.
But Bruce, I'd like to look these over, and I'd like to take action on them at the next meeting if that's acceptable to everyone.
That's fine, no problem. What was the other thing, what was the other thing that we had that?
Wages, wages.
Yeah, there was a discussion item for elected and appointed wages that Derek and Ruth and Marnie have been working on.
No, I thought there was something else, Derek, that you and I talked about.
Uh, regarding this RFP or something different?
Can't hear him.
He, he asked if it was regarding the RFP or if it was something else.
Something else.
It's not on the agenda, just the wages.
He doesn't, he doesn't recollect it.
All right, I'm seeing now. That's all I've got.
No, you're just on the West Coast, that's all. Things are done differently out there.
Amen.
We're not gonna discuss something then.
Oh, we are, the wages, yes. But we're, we will take this up as an action item on the actuarial because, you know, after Bruce and I talked to Foster and, uh, what was it, Foster and Swift, we really need to find out by our own, you know, methodology with one of these companies where we're at.
Just surprised at the pricing, so just bear it. I mean, it's just...
Well, and that's why we need to look these over because, you know, is the $7,000 one the best one, or is the $12,000 one the best? I'm not sure we wanna spend eight, but we can make that decision after we all have a chance to go through these with a yellow marker.
Yep.
Okay. So please continue, Derek, with the wage study information.
Is this what's already in our packet? I'll take, I'll take another one. Thank you, Derek.
It's colored, so we can read it better.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bruce, you, you said you had a dip hard about 10:15?
No later than that, that's correct.
Okay. Well, we'll take this up and then we'll jump right to, with Ruth's permission, I'll jump to this resolution on the public defender. So that way, if you get any comments on that, I think it's pretty straightforward, but we'll, that's why I ask. So we'll take up these wages right now, and then we'll jump to that before you leave. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Derek, go ahead.
So I guess I just have information to provide based on information that Marnie had collected and Ruth had collected for the elected and board commissioners. Uh, the elected one, it's kinda small, I apologize, I could've made it a little bigger. So there was about 18 counties that we had, we got information from. Basically, what Marnie did was inquire how much each position made at these, at these listed of counties. And then we took the average and compared it to what Hillsville County makes at these positions. Um, and then you can see the difference both by dollars and percentage. And then I also, just to try to make sure there was no outliers, at the very bottom, I took out the high and low of each position, but it did not change much with regards to the average. One thing to note, and this, and this is a problem that we found, I think, with the regular department heads as well. It's really hard in some of these positions to compare to other counties because just 'cause they have the same title doesn't necessarily mean they do the same work. And I think the drain commissioner is one of the biggest ones from the elected standpoint where that's the case. In fact, we could, we didn't even, of these counties listed, you know, five or six of them didn't even have a full-time drain commissioner. I talked to Matt about that a little bit, and he said there might be a better way to select the counties that you would use to come up with an average wage if that's our goal. Uh, but that's all stuff the board would have to consider. So really, that's, that's all the sheet tells us. So it's all information for the board. Talking to the regular department heads, uh, there's kind of a feeling that we're not sure we wanna go through with the, with that work when we're so uncertain about comparisons of job duties across counties. So I guess from that standpoint, we'd like information or kind of direction from the board on how to proceed with the department heads, um, as far as this wage study goes. And then the other sheet is the board commissioners. Ruth gathered all this information. She had asked a series of questions to each county. I've tried to summarize it in a spreadsheet here. Came up with about 13 counties. Of those 13 counties, I highlighted the six that receive health insurance in blue and the seven that don't in green. And you can see the averages compared to what the county board of commissioners make. And again, that's just information for you guys to decide, I guess, how you wanna proceed. And then if Ruth or Marnie have any other comments, that's really all I have.
Ruth, anything?
I, I do have one more thing. Sorry. Uh, in, in your list of questions, there, you didn't specifically ask if they get a retirement benefit. You said there was a section for any other benefits, and several of the counties listed that they get retirement in that section. But I wonder if some of them overlooked that as a possibility? So might wanna go back through and specifically ask that questions, but I was kinda surprised how many of them said no retirement. I mean, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine of the 13 did not list retirement as an additional benefit that they get. So I mean, when you consider the whole package, you know...
So I, I sat in on their meeting, what, last Friday?
Yeah.
I think it was. And one of the things that I made a note of that was kicked around was that perhaps there needs to be an outside look at this, a third party versus us doing our own study. And I guess that's something that the board needs to discuss if we want a independent look at, at wages. You wanna expound on that a little bit, Derek, as far as some thoughts?
I think that would, you know, curb a lot of the concerns of some of the department heads in general. Plus, it's always kind of a conflict when you have people, um, doing the study who are set to benefit potentially by the study. From that standpoint, it's always, I think it's always good to have someone outside doing all the work. I think in the last, and I'm not accusing anyone of any malice or anything, but in the last study, uh, all the department heads collected their own data and gave it to the board, and it was just accepted, you know, as frankly, you know? And so there's always, you know, room for corruption in situations like that. So I think it's a good idea if this is the method that the board wants to use.
Bruce, did you hear any of that discussion, or...
Ask me again.
Bruce, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Um, did you hear that discussion as far as the wage study?
I could make out part of it, but that's what I couldn't make out.
Okay. Well, the last part there was that at the meeting Friday, and Derek just expounded on it a little bit, if we're gonna do this, it might create less questions and maybe create a little better information if we were to look for a third party or an outside source to do if we wanna do this. And that's where we're at as far as the discussion.
Are you talking about just the electeds or the commissioners too?
It's up to the board.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Well, first of all, I'm not gonna vote for any increase for anybody at this point. We got a $4 million hole in our budget. We don't even know how we're gonna fix that. We don't have money to hand out to everybody else. So I'm not gonna vote, spend money, have somebody come in and tell us all kinds of stuff that, you know, I'm gonna end up voting no on anyway. I just think, there's always so much money in the till, in the till. I've said this many times before, and you're probably all sick here in Huesa, but we don't have the money to do such things. I mean, our last budget, we tried to address a portion of the budget, and we ended up $100,000 in all. We have groups we have to fix, as Bob said earlier. And we keep running and spending just like we've always spent. We don't have the money for raises, period. And quite frankly, when I ran for office, whether it was up in Lansing or down here, I knew what I was being paid. And I just think it's wrong to run for office and then turn around and ask for more money after you're in. I just don't think that's right. You know what the situation is when you run, you choose to run, and public service is not something that you do to get wealthy on, unless you're in Washington. Okay? But outside of that, I just, I can't support it in any way, shape, or form. So no, I don't think it makes any sense to spend money on some outfit to come in and tell us all kinds of stuff that we can find out on our own. I mean, I did that study, somebody came to us before, I guess maybe it was John, came to us with all kinds of counties and how we were terribly underpaid and so on, and I went back out and called quite a few counties and put that information together. Ruth has it, we're not underpaid. When you put our, when you put our pay together with our health insurance that everybody gets, we're not underpaid. A lot of other counties, if they had health insurance, they only give it to the one person, they don't give it to the full family. And we give full family, and when you figure all of it together, we're in good shape.
Every single one on here that gives insurance is full family?
Except for one. One of them doesn't.
So that's all I can say, huh?
Okay, okay.
I think we should just consider this information like we're doing the actuarial information and talk about it more at the next meeting. Since, I mean...
We're gonna have a lot on our plate for the next meeting.
I know. But we don't have, you know, people here too, so...
Well, this doesn't, and this doesn't have to be taken up at the next meeting, it can be discussed somewhere further down the road.
Yeah.
Because it's not gonna happen in this budget year regardless, because it's not budgeted. But it's, it's information that, um, by resolution that we did about five years ago that we were to do some sort of wage study in every ID year. And if we don't do it, we have no comparison or, or no benchmark. So, go ahead.
Where Commissioner Caswell started out by saying, "We're not gonna give any wage increases." You know, to me, the purpose of why we did this wage study, and I'm the one that did the commissioner's study, and Commissioner Caswell also did one last fall that I do have. It was not to give out wages increases, it was to fulfill the resolution from two years ago that said that we had to do a wage study. The more information that the commissioners have in writing in front of us when we make decisions, so that we're making our decisions based on facts, the better. This is why, like when Bob Godfrey stood up in front of us today, um, they don't, he doesn't have anything to show us. You know, he does a lot of talking, but he doesn't have anything to show us in writing that we can look at, that we can make decisions on. And that's what we need. To make the best decisions, you have to have information. And, and even if we don't give any raises, we're looking at this, and stuff has to be looked at. Up-to-date information has to be looked at. That, that was the purpose of the wage study in my understanding. Now, a couple of commissioners, I surveyed all these different counties, and a couple of the commissioners sent messages back to me saying that they were in the process of doing the same thing. That Mr. Joel from Gladwin, he sent me a message back, and he said, "I'm in the process of doing the same thing right now for our neighboring counties." And he, and a couple of them sent me messages and said, "Please send us the results of your study to us so that we have it." So I don't think it's out of order that the commissioners are, are surveying themselves because some other counties are doing that too.
Well, and with that said, Ruth, it's not just the commissioners. The way that resolution read it, there should be some sort of study for all elected and department heads, so... And last I knew, commissioners were elected, so we fall into that category. But in any event, there's some information here for us to digest. If you've got questions, you can address them to Derek or Marnie or Ruth and, you know, look it over. So, thank you, Derek.
You did a good job, Derek.
Very good.
Derek took all the information that I had, which was a lot, and put it into this spreadsheet and did a very good job on it. So I thank Derek for doing that. You did a good job.
Very handy with Excel.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Ruth, uh, I would like to take up that, uh, resolution if you would, if you don't mind me jumping over you for a minute here as far as, you know, on the agenda that is.
Right.
And that way, we can take this up before Bruce leaves. So Resolution 19090 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend authorizing the Chairman of Board of Commissioners, Mark E. Wiley, to sign the amended 2019 Public Defender Legal Services Arrangement, Legal Services and Arrangement Attorney Contract Appointing Attorney Keith Stickley. Mr. Stickley was hired to fulfill the remaining term due to the resignation of Barry Paulson, as stated in the attached agreement, respectfully submitted for adoption.
Supported.
Moved and supported. The attached documents are in your packet as far as the letter of, or explanation from Kim as far as the resignation, and then the amended contract. So Bruce, do you have any comments on this? Bruce?
I'm sorry, I was unmuted. I was talking back, but you didn't hear me. No, I don't have, I haven't seen it. I've been gone as, you know, and I don't know anything about it, so I don't know. This is Barry that's resigned now?
Yes. Barry Paulson has resigned, and Kim has hired this, uh, Mr. Stickley. So...
And it's the same contract, right? It's just changed the person. So there's no changes in the contract?
Right. He's just fulfilling the remainder of the contract.
Yeah. Barry got hired to replace somebody else that left, and now this guy is replacing Barry, and I, I don't know any of the details about why Barry is resigning or, you know, anything of that sort, so... But somebody's gotta be doing it, and he's the person in that position, so I will go ahead and accept that.
Okay. Very well. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, or resolution passes, I should say. All right. Well, we'll let you go, Bruce. It's about 10:15. At least it is here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a very good day.
Okay, take care.
Bye now. Okay, Ruth, that brings us up to you for your report, and then I'll have a few things to report on.
Okay.
We'll get back on agenda.
Well, the only thing I have, most of the committees that I'm on don't meet in the summertime, so there hasn't been any Human Services Network, there hasn't been any senior board meeting, there hasn't been much as far as those committees are concerned, they don't meet in the summer. I do want to remind the commissioners about the Michigan State. I sent you... I sent you guys an email. Does any commissioners know if they're going to be able to go to this thing for Michigan State Extension? This is where Michigan State Extension Director Dr. Jeff Dwyer is coming on Wednesday, August 21st to Jackson at night, and I don't think I'm going to be able to be here that night because I think I'll be out of town. But I checked with Matt Shane, and they're, this is kind of a big deal to have this director coming to our district, and so he said that all the commissioners are going to be invited. So, any commissioner can go to this, and I sent you the email. Are you going to be able to go to this Julie?
I don't.
What was the date?
August 21st.
I'm going to look.
It's a Wednesday night. It's up in Jackson at the Rogers Reserve, and they're going to serve dinner.
Yeah, it's actually south of Jackson. Yeah, I've been there before.
So, if you're going to go, you need to RSVP by this Thursday to give Laura a head count for the meal, and her email is in that email that I sent you, her... You reply back to her.
I have a meeting and I'm...
Okay.
Already, so I don't think I'm going to be able to...
Okay. So Julie is a no. You don't know.
TBA.
Okay. Mark, TBA. Ruth, no probably. And Tim, we don't know, and Bruce, we don't know. Okay.
Yeah, I'll try and let you know, but right now it's strictly up in the air.
Okay. All right. I'm trying to think. Suicide, lifeways, unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Questions for Ruth? Okay. VA Matt yesterday, and Renee already addressed the resignation, which is to be effective October 14th. When you look at the letter that she passed out, Tom's been in Hillsdale County for 41 years and regretfully leaves us, but he's moving to Florida. So, tired of the cold weather, I guess. But we spent a lot of time talking yesterday about respite care and Extraordinary Solutions who we... And there will be another RFP out for respite type services in October, because we looked up the contract and that comes up due in October. If you're watching the rain, I hope we get lots of it Ruth, because we need it. We are officially, by USDA, we are officially in a part, the southern part of Michigan is in a drought. So, we go from being too wet to too dry, so... Anyways, I did place a call yesterday to Julie Weatherby and left her a message to get with Renee. I didn't hear back, and matter of fact, I'll check with Renee before I leave the building. But I don't know if there's anything that, you know, Julie and Renee can work on through Region 2, because pretty much all the clients that Extraordinary Solutions are helping are seniors. And so, maybe there's something that we can do there to offset some of the costs that we're incurring, because we're going through about $5,000 a month helping with respite type stuff, so... And that's going to blow through our soldiers and sailors relief account in a fast hurry if we're not careful. I have a Board of Health Policy meeting tomorrow, and it's kind of strange, some of the contracts we'll be looking at tomorrow are for Region 3, because the Board of Health helps oversee Region 3 on aging, even though Hillsdale sits in Region 2. So, that's why our representatives to Region 2 are important for that. But I believe you said on that as well, or is it just Bruce? Region 2?
Just Bruce.
Just Bruce? Okay. I couldn't remember, and I meant to look it up. So, I'll talk to him some more, or I'll follow up with Renee to see if we can get some... And I know also the Senior Center helps veterans, but you know, there's, excuse me, getting to be more of a need, it seems like, more veterans we have that we identify, so... And I said it earlier, but I'll say it again for the viewing public, the next meeting for the Aquifer is, or August 29th at the County Building. It's on North High Street in Bryan, Ohio. And I'll have Marnie post that agenda and the meeting of, it'll be posted in the courthouse there. So, we have decided that since we have signed the document now, and the document, I believe, is in your packet as well, but now that we're an official entity, we need to make sure we post the meetings, so... That's all I have unless there's questions. I guess, well, the only other comment is we've got first round of labor negotiations on the 20th with the deputies at the Sheriff's Department and with the non-supervisor unit out at 911. So, and we'll probably get to the supervisors probably the first week of October, so... That's all I have. That brings us up to the next public county. Anyone wish to address the board at this time? And yes, I've got a note to call you Glenn.
Yeah, I know.
We were out to a meeting last night, so I didn't want to call you at 9:30. Go ahead.
I'm kind of in a position that I don't like being in. We have a culvert that's bad in our township. I asked the Road Commission the other day at the meeting, when they're going to get around fixing it, and I made a joke, "Are you going to fix it this year?" And they said, "No." Well, that's a shame. This culvert's about 10 foot round, 54 foot long. It's a big drain. I don't want to hear Doug Sanford's 911 thing go off, because we're going to have, there's a school on this road, albeit an Amish school. Take it big if you like it or not. But what's going to happen is the kids that come up Lilac Road to Cooper Road and go to the school are going to be pretty much forced to go up Cambria Road or Carpenter Road and take Reading Road down to Cooper and come back in. That to me is unacceptable. I don't want to have our emergency responders have to respond to some, something of that nature. I don't want to have the people that drive the cars live with that for the rest of their lives. I don't understand. It's between us and the Road Commission. I get that as far as who's going to pay for it. I don't know if I can get a regular contractor out there, buy the tube and have it done. I know I can't do that with a road, because I have to have an engineer, or we have an engineer at the Road Commission, but they can't work for us, which is weird. So, that's my thing. I don't know exactly what to do. There seems to be no rush on this.
Culvert is on Cooper Road?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Near Lilac. There has been close and gated off for months and months and months.
I will, I will talk to John Sanders after I get done here today, and I will get back to you today, so...
Their school starts like the 26th or 28th. I just don't want to see any more road rash. I really don't.
I'll find out what the problem is. I'll get back to you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you Glenn. Anyone else? All right. Sheriff, you have anything for us?
Only thing I would bring up is Indian Defense Fund?
Yes.
Approved for potential hiring and coming forward to the board again, just simply saying, looking for directions that we can potentially hire that deputy and be prepared come August 1st, or October 1st, because that budget had been approved, but the board said they were going to talk about it and give the direction. And just as a reminder maybe for the next meeting.
Seeing how Bruce isn't on the phone, and he's our resident expert, I will get with him on that. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All right. Steph, you got anything? I don't see any other elected. Marnie? Okay. Additional business, Ruth?
No, sir.
Julie? I don't have anything. We stay on the journey. Thank you all for coming.
I was just simply, I was bringing this to get signatures, and then it's supposed to go to town, I guess, so I'm guessing he'll get it to you, but maybe I'll make a copy anyways. Do you need to copy the whole document or just the signature?
It's built out.
The whole document?